Everybody ready? All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Budget Hearing and Meeting. It is Thursday, September 5th, 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. At this time, if we can all rise, and Councilwoman, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilwoman, now the star-strangled banner, please.
No, you wouldn't want that.
Chief, invocation?
This is your man.
Good evening. Good evening, Chief, how are you doing?
Very good.
How's Mom feeling before you start?
Doing very well, thank you. Thank you for asking. I don't think we reconvene prior to the anniversary of September 11th. We did bring the September 11th memorial for everyone to purview and enjoy and so forth. Just a reminder, over 2,900 victims lost their life on that tragic day in 2001, impacted over 70 nationalities, 2,753 victims at the World Trade Center, 184 from the Pentagon, and 40 victims of Shanksville, Pennsylvania crash, so a lot of families and friends and coworkers and so forth very negatively impacted from that day, so then, but we were graciously awarded a piece of metal from one of the World Trade Center beams and they put it proudly on display, so we thought we'd bring it tonight.
Thank you for sharing, Chief.
If you care to join me in a word prayer. Father God, we're reminded of the delicacy of our lives as September 11th approaches. Lord, we ask, as we do each year, your comfort for those families, those victims, the survivors, the families, the friends, the coworkers, all those that were touched that tragic day. Ask for your protection that that would not occur again and give us the wisdom and know-how to discover these things quickly and circumvent these type of tragedies. Lord, we pray for our council and the issues before them tonight. We pray for all our families that have returned and our children back in school, that you would protect them this school year and offer many blessings on our community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. We have no ceremonial items or presentations, so we're going to move right into the budget hearing, which is Resolution Number 2721-13. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mr. Cobb, before you go any further, I do need to embarrass you a little bit. Happy birthday to you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. This is a request for a city council to conduct the first of two required public hearings on the proposed milage rate and the tentative FY 2013-14 budget. The budget was presented to the council during two work sessions over the summer on July 22nd and August the 26th. At each of the work sessions, I want to tell you, council, how much we appreciate the input that you gave to us and helped us through this process, and we really, we took it to heart and we feel like that we've been able to address your concerns. The final budget is $51,980,050 net of inter-fund transfers and internal service charges. The general fund budget for FY 2013-14 is $23,721,858, which includes several new positions in public safety, technology, and human resources. The milage rate remained unchanged at 4.8626 mils, with the general obligation bond issue milage rate decreasing to .2741 mils, or a total milage rate of 5.1367 mils. It is recommended tonight that you adopt the resolutions and conduct the necessary public hearings. I also like to recognize Ms. Hayes, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Cole, once again, for their efforts on this. They have done an exemplary job in putting this budget together, and they're available here tonight to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I will now state that the proposed milage rate of 4.8626 mils is a revenue increase of 1.86% compared to the rollback tax rate of 4.7738 mils. That being said, is there anybody in the public who would like to address council on the budget and milage rate? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion, and, Mr. Group, could you kindly read by title only Resolution Number 2721-13?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution establishing the milage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2013-2014 by City of Oviedo's city government, adopting the milage rates for the 2013-2014 fiscal year for the City of Oviedo at the overall rate of 5.1367 mils, with 4.8626 mils for the city's operations, and .2741 mils for payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issue, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflict severability, and an effective date. And that's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the milage levy resolution Number We can discuss and vote on it. Upon adoption, we will publicly announce that the operating milage rate is set at 4.8626 mils, which is 1.86% higher than the rollback milage rate, and combined with the GOB bond issue of 2741 mils, the overall milage rate is 5.1367. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Schenck, any discussion?
Thanks for the hard work. Very good. Very great presentation.
Councilwoman?
Yes, congratulations, it was very well done.
Off to my left?
Ditto.
I'd also like to just add to that, the general obligation bond issue has gone down 9%, so that's also an excellent job by all, and I think that it will be accomplished later on, on our agenda. All of that being said, does anybody on council have anything else?
No.
The motion on table is to adopt. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Group, can you now read the title of the budget resolution, Number 2722-13?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution adopting the City of Oviedo's annual operating budget for the 2013-2014 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflict severability, and an effective date. That's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2722-13, adopting the fiscal year 2013-2014 annual budget of $51,980, uh, $51,980,050, excuse me, which is net of inter-fund transfers and internal service charges.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Schenck, you have the floor.
I think so.
You're good? Councilman Britton?
We're in good shape.
Excellent.
Let's go.
Councilwoman? Deputy Mayor?
Great job, everybody.
And ditto for myself. It was a well-thought-out, well-laid-out process with all the options given to us, which we do certainly appreciate from everyone. Anything else from council? With all that being said, the motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 2722-13, which is the annual budget. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, if I could ask one of them, one other motion from the city council?
Yes, sir.
Could you please do a motion to schedule the second public hearing for September the 16th, 2013?
Certainly. Did I miss that, or is that just not here?
Uh, no, sorry, it's just, you didn't miss anything.
Okay. Do I have, Mr. Group, when I state the motion, do I state it for both resolutions, just like you read for the second reading?
That'd be fine.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule the second public hearing for Resolutions Number 2721-13 and 2722-13 for September 16th, I believe it is, correct, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
September 16th, 2013, here in the Oviedo City Council chambers at approximately 6:30 PM, held at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved.
Second.
Barbara, you figure that one out.
(laughing)
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hearing done, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes for August 19th, 2013, our regular session. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of August 19th, 2013?
Second.
A motion and a second, end of discussion. Councilman Schenck, no second? Councilwoman?
No.
My left? No. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, items five, six, and seven. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is that you, Councilman Britton? Deputy Mayor, any questions?
Nope, looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilwoman? Councilman Schenck? We're getting another dog.
Chief, how come we're getting a dog?
Another dog? Chief, have we found a donation yet for the puppy?
Had conversations with the gentleman on that. We left this on the agenda just in case that doesn't...
Okay. And if it does come through, you'll just...
Correct. We won't use the money.
We'll flush the funds.
Correct.
Great, okay. Motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think we need to do a public comment.
Oh, public comment, I skipped over again. One of these, one of these days, I'll get used to this new layout.
It's easy to do that.
In the future, no, it does.
It's a good thing he didn't skip over the budget.
Yeah, I know. I get focused, and we just go. I do apologize. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on any item, either on or not on our agenda? This is your time to do so. I can now close public comments and move on to item number eight. Item number eight is ordinance Number 1573, creation of an auditor selection committee. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to amend the code of ordinances to allow for the creation of an auditor selection committee. The city is in its last year of its contract with its external auditing firm, McDermott Davis &amp; Company. Florida statutes provide that each local government entity shall use auditor selection procedures when selecting an auditor to conduct the annual financial audit. The governing body of a municipality shall establish an audit committee. The primary purpose of the audit committee is to assist the governing body in selecting the, an auditor to conduct the annual financial audit required by Florida statutes, and the auditing committee can also serve other audit purposes as well. The ordinance Number 1573 establishes the committee, establishes its purpose, and establishes the level of involvement that it will have in the development of financial statements. The committee will also have the authority by law to extend the contract for an existing audit firm without issuing a request for proposal. It's recommended that city council read Ordinance Number 1573 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt Ordinance Number 1573.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Group, would you please read Ordinance Number 1573 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, creating a City of Oviedo Audit Committee to implement controlling state law, providing for legislative findings and intent, creation, providing for the committee's purpose, membership duties and meetings, providing for savings provision, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing portion. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on ordinance Number 1573? Please do so now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1573?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Schenck, you have the floor. You're good? Councilwoman?
Okay.
To my left?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cobb, I just want to clarify in the, in the memo. It says in different places that ideally, all members of this committee, well, basic understanding, but it should be members of the governing body, but yet, then again, I see in other areas that the city council is going to appoint this board. So how, how is that going to work? Because I'm conflicted in reading different things in here. Is it us who are the, the board, or is it us appointing staff which it says should, you know, have competent understanding of financial reporting and all that? Are we appointing, or are we the board?
My understanding is that it will be a board appointed by the council.
Okay, yeah, because it, because I mean, it says here, all members of the audit committee should be members of the governing body.
Well, maybe I can help there.
Yeah.
This ordinance is set up to be the most flexible that it possibly can be. The auditor general has said that the members of a local governing body, or some of them, should be on the audit selection committee, audit committee. This ordinance is set up so that you can appoint five citizens to be the committee? You can appoint less than five, and the remainder of y'all, to be the committee, some subset of the council, or the council can be the committee, and you can do that year to year as you deem appropriate. So this ordinance provides the ultimate amount of flexibility to accomplish that goal.
Can't be staff members, too?
If they're citizens of the city.
Okay. Mm-hmm. When are we going to get that back to point that?
I assume it will be over the next few months, because we need to, we need to be able to get the committee put in place before the end of April. So we'll need to be able to do that.
Sometime before.
Yes.
Okay. I just was conflicted, because I didn't understand how it was, okay, so it could be us, members of the community, okay, gotcha.
You couldn't sleep last night.
Yeah, that kept me up.
Kept them up. You good, sir?
I'm good, thank you.
All righty. Any other questions? Hearing done, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance Number 1573. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Up to number nine, ordinance Number 1575, tax abatement program. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to approve a tax abatement program to complement the city's existing economic development programs. The tax abatement program was approved by the city's electors on November the 6th, 2012, through a successful referendum. Ordinance Number 1575 codifies that tax abatement program authorized by the electors. Tax abatement program is part of the city's continued economic development programming aimed at creating jobs and stimulating capital investment within the city. Ordinance 1575 establishes the eligibility requirements, including required number of jobs created, targeted industries, targeted areas, salary criteria, and additional factors for consideration of, of the program. It is recommended that city council read Ordinance Number 1575 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt Ordinance Number 1575.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Group, at this time, would you kindly read ordinance Number 1575 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, establishing an exemption from certain ad below arm taxation for certain new businesses and expansions of existing businesses, providing a short title, providing for enactment authority, providing findings of fact, providing for definitions of terms, providing for establishment of economic development ad below arm tax exemption, providing for an application for an exemption, providing for council consideration of such applications, providing for no application fees, providing for continuing performance, providing for council revocation of exemption, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for a sunset date, providing an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Seeing that this is an ordinance, I will open up the public hearing portion. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on ordinance Number Seeing none, we are going to close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 1575.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
Nope, this is good. It's just another tool in there to make us the, you know, the best place to stop for new business and help them out with new stuff they're going to do, so it's great. John, thank you for all your hard work on that, promoting it, so off we go.
Councilman?
Ditto. Thanks, John.
Councilwoman?
Okay.
You're good. Councilman Schenck?
Just puts in effect what we've been looking for for the past year, so that's great.
Okay. Mr. Jones, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. John Jones, Little John Engineering Associates, Orlando, Florida.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Just a quick question on what was approved by the voters. Now, this will apply to new construction, and it's a tax abatement on only the new construction or on the land and everything?
The tax abatement only applies to new construction and applies to new equipment that is installed in the facility. It does not apply to land.
What about land being brought into the city for this purpose?
It does not apply to land at all.
Okay, great. That's all I needed to know.
Very good.
Is that just because the way the amendment was passed by the voters?
No, that's the way the enabling statutory language was set up for tax abatements. So you always have the underlying tax revenue associated with the land coming into the city or the county.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else from council? Hearing done, I'll call the question. The motion on the table is to adopt ordinance Number 1575. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 10, first reading of ordinances, we have none this evening. Resolutions, item number 11 is Resolution Number 2727-13, authorizing issuance of the, of the limited ad below arm refunding note, Series 2013. We'll let Brian explain that. You're up, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to authorize a negotiated loan in an amount, in an aggregated principal amount, not to exceed $5,000,000, for the purpose of refunding a portion of the city's outstanding limited ad below arm bond, Series 2003, the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, the execution and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement, and appointment of the escrow agent, and the execution and delivery of a limited ad below arm refunding note, 2013. At its August 19th, 2013 regular meeting, the city council awarded RFP Number 13-12 for a bank-qualified tax-exempt limited ad below arm refunding note to TD Bank. The purpose of the refunding is to take advantage of interest rates, savings, and to pass those savings on to city residents in the form of a milage rate reduction in the general obligation debt. The refunding creates a reduction in the fiscal year 2013-14 proposed budget, general obligation milage rate from 0.275 mils, uh, of 0.275 mils, from .3016 to .2741, which is approximately 9%. The city will save approximately $50,000 annually, $1,600,000 over the life of the loan, and $716,000 on a present value basis. The interest rate on the note is 3.425%, and will be paid semiannually on April 1st and October 1st, commencing April 1st, 2014, until the note's paid in full. It is recommended that city council adopt Resolution Number 2727-13, and I wanted to let the council know that Mr. Mark Galvin, our city's financial advisor, as well as Ms. Misty Taylor from Bryant Millard &amp; Olive are both here tonight and are available to address questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I do not have any request to speak forums on this item, so we will move on to the pleasure of council. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2727-13?
Second.
A motion and a second. Councilman Schenck, you have the floor. Good. You know what? Keep saying thank you to you guys, you keep working hard to find these ways for us to save and put this together, so we appreciate everything from all of you. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
Down to my left? Ditto, ditto. Good.
Yeah, I mean, anytime, yeah, Councilman Schenck hit it, anytime, you can go, I mean, we've really looked at everything this city has done now, and refinanced it to lower stuff, and, you know, to give the citizens back a little tax decrease on the bond is good, and, you know, we've really left no stone unturned, and we've looked at everything, and I've always said through the years, are we done yet? And I think we're done, we got it where we want it, and it's, it's all good, so thank you all for helping us out on that, we appreciate it.
Great. I guess the question would be, Mr. Boop, why don't you come on up for a second? Why don't you come on up for a second, I have a question for you. Deputy Mayor brought up a, a good point, that you've been looking at a lot of these, but are we done, or are there others that may be able to refinance for savings?
There are other opportunities that we're looking for next year. We're done this year because we have reached our maximum amount that we can possibly refinance on a BQ status. The opportunity opens up again January 1st, 2014. At that time, we're going to be looking at the utility note that we weren't able to refinance this year.
Okay. That's a big one.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Great, thank you, Mr. Group.
All right.
All the bond council in the back, just big smile on their face when you said that.
January 1st, they'll be at the first meeting, we're ready to rock and roll.
Yeah, bond council, the finance guy's, he's got a big grin. All righty. Motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 2727-13. Does any member have anything else? I'm going to call the question then. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. No discussion items? Mr. Birthday Boy, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one item for you tonight. We were contacted by representatives of the Oviedo Preservation Project. They are, we received requests whether or not we want to sponsor their annual calendar. We have done so in the past. They've given us dates that, different months this year, more than, more months to choose from. In the past, the city has donated $1,000 to the calendar, and this year, they've given us January, February, May, June, September, and November. Last year, I believe, we chose November because of its relationship to Snow Mountain and holidays. So I was just wondering if you wish to, once again, sponsor the top calendar?
At the same, at the same. Councilmembers looking for consensus?
Yes.
Good, 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 good. You got it.
Thank you.
That's all I have for tonight.
All right. Okay, Lonny, I highlighted you on this thing. Lonny, do you have any report tonight?
Well, since I'm highlighted, I need to say something.
(laughing) Well, you see, you really are, Lonny.
I, I...
I got to highlight that public comment one.
Now, the only thing I'd, I'd point out, just for information purposes, you know, from time to time, the chief and I talked to you about the status of the red light camera situation in the state of Florida. It came out today that the chairman of the Florida Senate Transportation Committee, who has been a proponent, sort of, of red light cameras, has now stated today that he is going to seek the repeal of the red light camera statute, so come see, come saw, watch your legislature.
What's, what's, what's his reasoning for that? Do you give a reason why?
Well, he said he was going to delay his final decision until the OPAGA, which is a study agency of the legislature, finished the study, but if they didn't finish the study, he decided he'd state his opinion, so I don't know. That's the answer to you.
What does that say, Lonny, to cities that already have them in already?
There's 76 jurisdictions, as I recall, that have them. They wouldn't have them, at least not under the statute.
Wow.
So, well, I mean, depending upon what the legislation says ultimately, if it's
passed. But anyway, it's just, you know, local, local governments, you know, are affected by the legislature, so.
Wow.
Keep your eye on them.
Tell them to keep their hands off tornadoes, Simms.
Don't worry about that, they'll see.
And that's all I have.
That's all I have, Mr. Groot? Great.
Uh, Mayor, could I, could I add one little thing? And I must apologize for this.
No worries.
I would, I'd like to introduce Ms. Teresa Carrera, our new Development Services Director.
Brian, I already called her with a small issue today, so.
Awesome. That's great. That's, that's better than calling me.
I got thrown right into the frying pan.
Day one, you're already, come on, Thursday. I'm sorry, Teresa.
I, I was at the chamber lunch today with Counselor Schenk, and, you know, these things come up. So, welcome. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
No, sir. Thank you.
All righty, moving on to reports. I'm up first. I'll be brief. As I just mentioned, Counselor Schenk and I were at the Oviedo Winter Springs Chamber Luncheon today, and Wendy Brandon, CEO of Central Florida Regional Hospital, put on a wonderful presentation of Oviedo ER, and everything, all the amenities that it is going to have. And as we've said numerous times, it is going to be a full-service emergency room, just like at any hospital. So they're going to have trauma rooms, no, one trauma room, 12 patient rooms. If I miss anything, Counselor Schenk, jump in. Lab, x-ray, a psych, a psych ward?
One, no, one of the rooms will be for protective, that, you know, will have no, will have the equipment shielded so that in case they need to protect somebody.
Right. Sort of like a psych room if that's.
They'll be able to do virtually everything.
Virtually everything.
Any, any emergency room can do, they can do.
And one of the interesting statistics that Ms. Brandon presented to the audience was, in all of their research that they could gather from insurance companies and other hospital networks, the need is emergency room here right now, not beds. Because, well, it was like some 99 percent or something of.
Yeah, that, that are, for all that cross all the hospitals, not just theirs, that transport from this area, that they, they don't stay overnight. They're dismissed from the day. So it's a true emergency room situation versus having to check them into the hospital. And it was like 90-something percent, 92 or 93 percent, something like that.
Yeah, it was some, it was in the 90s. So, you know, it, it, the audience that was there today numbered, there must have been 100, 110 people there for the luncheon today. And it was great to see everybody's eyes open up and realize how this is going to work and how the expansion will happen. And I think some of them were quite surprised at the amount of land that they have over there for expansion in the future. They also announced today the executive director for Oviedo ER, who is Mrs. Janet Livingston. Janet's a 17-year resident of the city of Oviedo, and most recently worked for RHS, and at one point in time ran their Level 1 Trauma Center for about two or three years. She has been hired on by Central Florida to run RER. So we are in great hands, and Chief White is nodding his head. Janet's son is one of our firefighters.
Yes, he is.
So Janet's been, is well-respected, wouldn't you say, chief?
Yes.
So we are in good hands. Moving on, chief, you've got your farmer's market on Saturday, correct? Eight to one?
Yes.
Eight to one. Hope to see everybody there. September 20th is the Always Awaiting Football Challenge Cup. Drew, you got that cup ready to go? Bobby's not letting it go right now, right? It's still in the showcase.
Hold on.
All righty, well, hopefully we'll have it there for the game. Drew, is it 7 o'clock kickoff?
I've got to call them.
Okay. You can send us out an email and just let us know. And over the last couple of weeks, I did a few State of the Cities. The other night, I did one for the Lions Club over at Twin Rivers Golf Course. And, you know, once again, as I report with all of these, once everybody sees the State of the City and kind of sees how it all, everything that we're doing fits together, you know, their eyes just really light up. So the State of the City, Robin, is out on the website, correct? So anybody who wants to go out there and look through it. Also, I saw a whole bunch of updates on Oviedo on the park, drawings, pictures, veterans tribute. Yeah, it's all right there. So if anybody's interested, cityofoviedo.net. And that is the end of my report. Counselor Schenk?
The mayor pretty much hit everything. I will add that the one thing that they, that Wendy also pushed was the turnaround time. They, they really keep track of that number, how well, how quickly they release the EMS, how quickly they meet up with the EMS, how quickly they release the EMS. So for us, hopefully, we, you know, it puts our EMS guys back on the street. And A, because it's stacked much closer, but the turnaround time, the release time will be that much quicker. And having the paramedics and having units out in the street where they're needed versus spending time traveling to different hospitals and waiting to get released really adds to our level of service a great deal. So I think having that, having that ER right there will also, they were very, that was one of the statistics that she knew and was very proud to say, we know this, we track this, and this is a very important statistic for us. So very happy to hear that. That's it. Thank you.
And just to point out, what leadership class was Wendy Brandon from?
Uh, the best 20.
19. 19. Thank you. Uh, Council, Deputy Mayor Hank?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
16? 19. 19 was the best class, most accomplished.
How many people were in class 16 in here? All right, we got to remember who else.
Wait, wait, wait. 19, 19, 19. Who's I with at 19 in the city?
Oh, I think I might have been wrong, by the way. I was, wasn't I?
Nice. All right, just a couple, couple of quick things. Lonnie, nice to see you back in your chair. We had some competent fill-ins with Ms. Nix, so that was good. Good to see you back there. Brian, happy birthday. Teresa, welcome aboard. And I just want to just, I like to do this, I know sometimes it embarrasses some people, but I just want to throw out some props to, to Robin. Because this girl, for the last month since Catherine left, I have noticed, has stepped into just about every role that we asked, and going just above and beyond, and keeping it smooth, doing the budget, taking care of all these other things. So I just want you to know, we all see it and greatly appreciate it. You've made our lives very easy. You've made the lives of everybody around you easy. And, you know, I really couldn't imagine without you with this transition. So props to Robin. It's a good day for Oviedo, and that's the end of my report.
Uh, Counselor Madre?
No report.
Huh? Football's on, right?
Yes, yes. I got the message, Lonnie.
Counselor Groot, what do you have?
Just real quick, we had a calendar meeting last night, and Deputy Mayor Magno gave me a survey from the Tourist Development Commission, and I'll pass it on to you, Brian. What they're looking for is a list of events in each city, like Taste of Oviedo, whatever. They want to put that out in a, in a mailer or something online where tourists come to the county, they, they can go on there and see which events are going on in the county. So pass that along to you. And the only thing I have is a meeting tomorrow with Duke Energy with Tricia Setzer, which is a, an outcome of the conference we had. She, she rolled out a program they have for providing energy efficient improvements to homeowners in selected neighborhoods that, that are, it's very much aligned with our ION program. So she's going to sit down and talk with me on that, and you're going to lop on a bunch of other subjects regarding streetlights and other, other issues with them. So they've come forward to work with us. So I'm very happy about that.
Could you add one thing to your agenda with her tomorrow? I was called today by residents and the HOA of Blackhammock Preserve up off of Florida Avenue. And evidently, they're having an issue with blackouts just in their neighborhood that range from two minutes to two hours. And it's only their neighborhood. They've had nine of them in the last four or five months. They've called Duke Energy, and, you know, of course, Duke says they have to get the engineers out there, and they're not hearing back from anybody. If you wouldn't mind just bringing that up for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Man Britain, are you going to talk to her about the lights on Lockwood?
We, we did a survey. Bobby had a couple guys survey the entire city. We wrote every single light out.
Okay, good.
Lockwood, we think, may, may be something other than light bulbs going out.
Yes.
So we'll talk about that, and have them look at that, as well as the maintenance of the poles themselves.
Because I think they've changed the light bulbs a few times, right, Bobby? And then you go down there, and a lot of them are out. So, you know, they, it's probably something else.
I guess I don't drive down Lockwood. I don't, I don't see that many, but when I do, I try to determine. But, yeah, we've got, they've been very responsive in looking at this off and all the other issues. So those two, I appreciate.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
All righty. Hold on a second.
If I, hold on a second.
Oh, okay, sure.
I grabbed something. We've, now that we're done the budget, I'd like to bring up a, an issue that has been there, sitting around for a little while. And, you know, it's his birthday, it's a good time. I'd like us to look at when we're going to consider possibly taking off the interim tag on Mr. Cobb, his title or that option, and what we want to do with that. Because I'm all in favor of the great job that Mr. Cobb has been doing. Our budget is done. We've now done our millage rate. And I'd like to add that as a discussion and put that up on the table.
Make a motion.
I can make a motion if need be, but we don't make, we don't make motions from this point, so unless we want to. Well, I'd like to add the discussion.
Why don't we, why don't we have a discussion?
That's what we need to do.
Let's start with Deputy Mayor. You got anything to add to that?
Well, I, I agree wholeheartedly. Brian, you know, you've really done a great job and, you know, along, like I was saying with Robin, Brian, you've held it together. You've earned it, in my view. I'm, I'm, I'm ready. I was ready weeks ago. So if council wants to consent, I would, I would approve.
You're not impetuous, right, or anything like that?
No, I just, I don't, I don't like interim statutes for anybody, you know.
Anything to add, Counselor?
Only that, I, I agree with Counselor Man Schenk, because when, when we started this process, we spoke with Brian, and he wanted to go through the budget process. So that's, now's a good time to bring that up. But I, I think we, we probably owe it to Brian to have a talk with him and find out what his, his goals are, and his plans are, and what his desires are. Having said that, I, I'm your advocate, Brian. If you want it, we'll, we'll advocate for that.
Counselor?
But I haven't had the conversation with you, so I want to, I want to give you that opportunity, too.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree that it's important to hear what Brian has to say, whether or not he even wants to be permanent or not. I am still a believer in, in competition and putting it out for a bid. But Brian has done a, a wonderful job. I was very impressed with several issues that he has dealt with. So I'm, I'm very impressed with him, and, but I'd like to hear from him, what he would like, if he would even like it. He may not even want to work for us.
Well, Mr. Cobb and I have talked about this a long time, so Brian, you know how I feel. Mr. Groot, looks like you have some information.
Well, no, I was just going to say that should you desire to move in that direction, perhaps the way to do it would be to allow Mr. Cobb to formulate the, or negotiate, if you will, a potential city manager contract that could then be brought for you, before you, so that you could either act upon it favorably or not, or have a discussion about that particular document in front of you.
Would it be the consensus of council for Mr. Groot and Mr. Cobb to have that conversation?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to be our city manager?
Yes, sir.
All right. Have the conversation.
Have the conversation then.
Yes, sir.
Bring it back to us.
We will.
16th, the first, whatever is most comfortable for everybody.
Nice.
Is that good with all of us?
Great.
All righty. Anything else? Hearing none. Future meeting dates. We have Monday, September 16th. We have two meetings on that Monday, guys. CRA starts at 6:00. Regular session is at 6:30. Monday, the September 23rd, we have a 5:30 PM work session. Mr. Cobb, what is the topic of the 23rd work session?
Land of Elm, oh, September 23rd, yes, sir. Land of Elm Code. We have, we'll be bringing forward the results of our preference survey.
Okay.
And, yeah, we're going to, it'll be wrapping up our series of work sessions on the Land of Elm Code. And then we'll also be bringing back, hopefully bringing back a, the follow-up on the impact of the smart growth proposal.
Well, that, those are my favorite work sessions, so let's schedule that for about four hours.
Okay.
No. Good to have. Actually, what you can do is you can schedule that work session to the mayor and Counselor Man Schenk. The three of us, we're going on vacation.
Okay.
They can deal with all of that COVID stuff.
I thought we would stagger it. Maybe have like Mayor Mr. Schenk at 5:30 to 7:00, and then let the rest of you come in at 7:00.
Teresa, don't let them get over on you now. You tell them how it's being done, and that's it, you know?
All righty. Monday, a couple more things to announce here for future meeting dates. Monday, October 7th, 6:30 PM regular session. Then Monday, October 21st, we have a regular session. And as we can all see, work sessions are starting to drop off. Budget is over. LDC is over, so we should get to a little bit more of a normal schedule. Before I hit the gavel, is there anything else?
I'd just like to request that we get the agenda for the CRA meeting a day early so I have time to review it, because it's always a lengthy.